Yeah.
Clinton City Council, Committee of the Whole will please come to order. We'll begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gascoigne.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
McGraw.
Here.
Dederman.
Here.
O'Neil.
Here.
Alasey.
Here.
Thank you. Our first item tonight is a request for a part-time nuisance inspector position. Chief Brown?
Here.
Here. McGraw.
Here.
Dederman.
Here.
O'Neil.
Here.
Alasey.
Here.
Thank you. Our first item tonight is a request for a part-time nuisance inspector position. Chief Brown?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Brown, Fire Chief. This request kind of originated through some complaints from the public about the look and the vision of the city of Clinton, the lawn grass being the issue. And I think some people that were at a meeting and overheard some of this stuff said, you know, well, there's lots of ways to skin a cat, but I mean, to go out and enforce the grass nuisance in Clinton, it takes people. We have one person that's very dedicated in doing that job. She spends countless hours doing it, but when you look at the light at the end of the tunnel, you can't even see the light in the tunnel. It's just an endless job. So, you know, if that's really, if it becomes your desire to try to clean that up, I think it's going to take somebody to help her out. To go back a little ways, I think back as early as 2011 is the last time we had an assistant that did that. There used to be a guy that came in to work for the summer just to help with the grass end of the nuisance. And that position was not refilled. Marie Vanderstand, and you all know her, does a heck of a job. She puts a lot of time in it. And I think Battalion Chief Chapman can talk about some of the stats. Give you an idea when she came in, and I think it was Saturday, they had forty-seven complaints, just that had been logged online. By the time she got to the end of those forty-seven and went through the process, they had twenty-three more. And that's just complaints. That's not going out and finding law grass. That's just addressing citizen complaints. And they have almost seventy properties that they just mow on a regular basis. I mean, there's just people that won't mow their grass and they're just on a continue. We do it. We assess the homeowner. So, it's just, it's a never-ending cycle. The way we do it is, you know, following the rules as far as certified mail, giant amount of paperwork that it takes to get it done. So, what we're proposing is to bring someone on July, August, and September and try to knock down the brunt of this. I think people will look at it, you know, from an economic development standpoint and go, how are we supposed to entice people to town when people have, you know, foot-long grass in their yards? And it's, most of us go, we don't even get that because we mow our grass when it gets long, but there are people that don't. So, that's where we're at. If you'd like to talk about some of the stats and fill you in on some of those, then I'll answer any questions you have.
Maybe for Jessica, do we assess them besides the mowing for all our time and stuff?
Yeah, there's a forty-five dollar administrative fee that gets tacked on there as well. But as we'll talk with the next item, there are some properties where those items, those are just not being paid. Our rate of pay, payers who actually pay before things are leaned is not very high. And then even after leaning is, there's still some that just, they don't get paid.
Yeah. And again, that's just a grass issue. I mean, Marie's busy with all sorts of other nuisance stuff, and that stuff never ends either. But I think it's when we really, we get the worst complaints is when the grass is long or the sidewalks aren't shoveling. Sidewalks, you know, that melts. The grass just keeps growing.
I just came up Seventh Avenue South.
Yeah.
Well, that probably has been that way for a month now.
Has someone turned that one in?
Huh?
Okay.
Well, and you know, and Jeff goes out and finds them. I mean, the way it's set up right now, Marie or anybody else really doesn't have the opportunity to be proactive, it's just reactive. We're just reacting to all these complaints. And we're thinking that with somebody else, boots on the ground, they had a very minimal pay band, they could, at least somebody could go out and be reactive and try to get some of these that are just out of hand, so.
Are they all coming in on the computer now, online?
On OS ticket? Quite a few of them.
I know. I've invited a lot of people to use that and show them how to use it.
And we're hoping more people will do that because, here, Jeff, hold it to you.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, Jeff Chapman, BNS.
Before you start, I'm glad to see you voted.
I did. I did vote.
And just a reminder for those that are at home, instead of watching us tonight, if they haven't voted, they should go out and vote. They have till eight o'clock.
I got a complaint they're overcrowded, so.
I, I.
Yeah, I'm sure. Just back to your question, we're steering everybody to OS ticket. They still don't, there's a lot of people that don't do that. So, if they call into BNS on the phone, instead of writing a note or sending an email, I log on to OS ticket. I put them in there. And what that does is it allows them, one of the biggest complaints that I get from people in the public is, you guys don't ever do anything. I've called thirty times. This property's been like this. This allows them to see the opening of the complaint and all the way through the process until it's closed. And people that have done it love it. Some of them love it too much. But it does work. We still have a certain amount of individuals that don't have the internet. They don't have email. Heck, they still have a home phone, no cell phones, which is kind of funny these days, but that's the way it is, so we try to help them out as much as possible. Just to kind of backtrack a little bit with this problem, this is the third summer that, this will be the third summer that I've set in BNS. In each of the last three years, I've heard people say, I've never seen it this bad. The first summer over, I was like, is it always this bad? No, it's, this is the worst I've seen it. Last year topped that. And right now, we're early and it's been terrible. Drive down Fourth Street and you can't help but being irritated by everything that you see coming down Fourth Street. And that's just one. I mean, the main drags that you see, you try to keep them clean. Just going back to a few things, we have sixty-six grass and weeds that we autocut, and that's for people that are no longer with us. There's still a property in their name. They're deceased. There's nobody to take responsibility for that. That's grown considerably. Some of them are multiple owners, but them are the ones that we do every single year. I mean, if you mark them down at sixty-six every two weeks, you can add that up at eighteen fifty an hour on probably a minimum of two hours, plus a forty-five dollar charge. That's quite a bit of money that goes out there. I just read just a couple of stats for you so you kind of understand what we're up against. This, so far this spring, like I said, sixty-six autocuts at eight inches. It's about every two weeks right now. It does tail out in the summer if it's hot, dry. We don't mow them as often. Fifty-seven grass and weeds that we've done so far on re-inspects that we went out and have to, you know, go out and they've done their own. Nineteen grass and weeds that are pending letters. Fourteen grass and weeds that are pending inspection, posting letters. That's right now that we've done, probably yesterday. We've done eighteen property securities. I mean, we have property that, we have doors that are open, windows that are broken, that we've actually secured the property so we can't get people in there squatting, starting fires, things of that nature. We've removed four dangerous chimneys. We've done nine demos of unsafe structures, meaning garages or sheds, not the entire house, but garages or sheds that are leaning or nobody's taking responsibility for. Removed forty-one inoperable and unregistered vehicles. That's prior to the PD and what they've done new, which has really taken a lot off of us. Ninety-two garbage or debris cleanups in people's yards thus far in the spring. Sixteen stop work orders that we've seen people that are doing work without permits. Threw that in there. Then that goes on with the steady amount of paperwork. Just to reiterate, Friday she cleared her log out, came back on Monday morning. This is four-thirty or five o'clock on Friday evening. Comes back Monday morning, there's forty-seven complaints on the nuisance hotline. That's not OS ticket. That's the nuisance hotline. Cleared them out yesterday, came back in today. As I just looked downstairs, there's twenty-eight on there right now. So, she's still taking care of the forty-seven. Have not got to the twenty-eight that are currently sitting there at this time. On top of that, the process, and I've kind of, if you'd like to look at our, I made some copies. You can look at the process. This is just for grass and weeds. When we get a complaint coming, there's a little flow chart of what happens in order, prior to being able to mow that lawn. I don't think everybody understands what goes the cable. But going with that, you know, we receive the complaint either by the nuisance hotline, OS ticket, or the front desk. People will come right in and just fill out multiple things. They walk down, they're sick of walking and seeing this thing. They walk right to City Hall and they fill out complaints. Once we get that, we go out and investigate that, post the property for noxious weeds or grass and put the warnings down. And that's the pink sticker that goes on that door that has to be done. Once we post that, we mark a date on there. It's five days out that we have to leave that posted for five days before we can do anything. Now, coming back from that posting, this is just one, you have to send out certified mail at three dollars and seventy-six cents per letter to that person. I would tell you right now, greater than sixty percent of them do not get picked up. So, if you talk about, I just did a stack from last week.
They want the super bills.
From last week, sixty of them that were returned in one, and that's a week. That's almost, that's two hundred and forty bucks, two hundred and, two hundred and some dollars in one week that just threw out. Once the letter's sent, we give them the five days like I talked about. We fax the work order to the nuisance contractor. The property gets rechecked prior to mowing. We do a picture before and a picture after, so there's a picture taken prior to mowing, a picture taken after the mowing. It goes on a list. Once we do that one time, now, once we see it high, we don't have to do that again. It's one time for that season, and we can continue to mow it every two to three weeks. And then we have the billing. We come back and do the billing. We QA the billing to make sure that the billing matches on the invoice that we're given. We submit the statement to finance, enter the information in the firehouse software, send out the bill. Right now with nuisance billing, the ordinance states they have thirty days to pay that. If it's not paid in thirty days, it gets flagged for lean. Lean list is made, comes before you, you approve it, gets sent up to the county. We lose it from there. I'm not sure what gets paid and what doesn't from that point. And we do lean as, we lean them as indicated. And it's a long tedious process. And what I understand, and I haven't got to the bottom of it, is are we bound by state law? People, some people tell me are. I can't find it to where it just spells it out that we're bound by that. But I, the way I understand it, we can't change much on what our process is, which is frustrating. I would like to see a more proactive approach to that, to you get tagged and in twenty-four hours it isn't done. We do it for you. But that's going to extreme. Yes, sir.
Are you bound by a process because of an ordinance or are you bound by a process because, I think, you know, maybe that's something we need to?
Several years ago, I remember we looked at this, and we wanted to eliminate sending out the certified piece of mail. And it came out that we couldn't do it. There was a way to not, they wouldn't have to pay the claim if they didn't get the potential, showing that we notified them to be rejected.
Who told us that?
Well, I can tell you, the city attorney can probably do a memo to you explaining a little bit more. But this is a due process situation. Everybody gets that initial due process to be notified of the problem and then to correct that problem.
Well, okay, but I guess, I guess my point is, you know, has Lynch Dallas looked into the process? Can we streamline it and?
All of our previous city attorneys have.
I.
I would, I would add something here. Not only have we looked into it, but there, we're doing it in a number of different ways. And I think the way Jeff described the lean process is accurate. There are limitations to that. Once you lean the cost over to the county, then it's really the county's lean at that point unless you follow the statutory process to have them give that lean back to us. Now, we have two years to assert that in a form of a lawsuit, and almost, it's almost never done. But there are a number of other ways in which you can proceed against these homeowners. You don't, you don't have to use the lean process exclusively. You cannot lean those amounts over. You can seek judgments against them. You can seek municipal infractions against them, and those work sometimes if you can get a magistrate that's very willing to assert, to sign orders that require compliance. And if they don't comply, then there's a contempt action which can then subsequently follow, and that tends to get people's attention in certain cases. So, there's more to do than just the standard leaning process that I know the staff follows. There are other ways you can do it. Of course, there's some expense involved, so you want to pick and choose and really choose those folks that are really in serious violation. But there's that, and then, of course, there are other more extensive ways if we want to take over the property. And of course, I know you know about that. And one thing we discussed recently was the six fifty-seven A process for really bad properties, but I think that's a separate discussion.
One of the things that I will say that we have had a conversation with the city attorney, one of the issues with doing municipal infractions and trying to seek judgments is, Jeff mentioned, there's sixty-six that we're basically autocut, cutting because there is not a present landlord, whether they're deceased or just out of town and abandoned the property. So, it gets really difficult to use those types of proceedings on our biggest offenders when there's really nobody there. And it could just be that there's tax certificates on the property that are held by the county for years of unpaid things. So, we've looked, we've talked with Lynch Dallas about how can we try to do this a little bit better? But I think it comes down to trying to figure out where is the problem. I don't think our problem is that we have citizens that just don't care. I think there are certainly a few of those. That's no doubt about that, but that's not the entire situation. I think a lot of it comes down to abandoned properties, and that's really the core of the issue of what we're dealing with on most of the complaints.
Unfortunately, on the abandoned properties, about the only recourse we really have is to lean the property because there's nobody to go after.
So, if we're, Pat, if we're posting the properties, is there a reason we have to spend all this money doing certified mail? Why can't we just send out a letter? We've informed them two different ways.
Your first time you have to.
Yeah.
It's the first time. So, everybody gets that the first, the first time. So, but then once, once we have been through that process once with the property, we do not have to continue to do that. And that's kind of the term autocut that Jeff used. They've already received their one letter for the year, or in many cases, it's been returned back to us because they failed to pick it up.
We have to have the proof that at least we made the attempt to contact them. So, we have to wait till we get that back that they didn't get it, you know, or didn't, they wouldn't pick it up. And otherwise, we don't, I think it's part of that, then we don't have a claim if we haven't followed the procedure.
Not to add to that, once we send that certified letter, there's three opportunities that they attempt to serve that.
So, there's, what is it about?
That takes some time. By the time we get it back.
It's about fourteen days, isn't it?
It's a little bit more than that.
It's, okay.
It's, by the time it's, the whole process is done, we're just shy of three weeks.
Yeah.
Imagine the grass. It's already been tagged at ten inches three weeks later, and that's what we deal with.
So, if most of, most of these are reoccurring or auto, the burden on us as a city should slow down significantly after the beginning stages of summer, because after we've gone through this once, then we're floating.
We're in our high time right now. Right now's the spring when the, when, you know, we get the dog days of summer there.
Yeah.
It slows down. It picks back up at the, at the end of summer to begin of fall.
So, why do we want this person starting in July, then?
Well, look at the date of where we are.
Well, and they need to be starting.
Should start the first of May.
So, this isn't something that's going to reoccur. This is just going to happen this year?
Well, that's where I think we would want to evaluate, you know, with the remainder of this season. And then in the budget process for fiscal year eighteen, hopefully include something which would be starting a little bit in fiscal year seventeen as well. So, I think we want to just evaluate, make sure it goes well. The one thing that I will say, even though grass and weeds might die off a little in August and July when it gets really hot, there are still plenty of other nuisances that are out there that we're getting complaints on frequently that don't necessarily fall in the grass and weeds. And this person could, you know, back up on that and assist with that as well.
I remember when we used to have our summer, well, Mike, you remember, we used to have the gentleman that came in about May and worked till October. Dave, yeah, I was trying to think of his name. And that's all he did was really grass and weeds. But it freed up our other inspector to actually go out after the real nuisances, who's actually being all consumed with their time doing grass and weeds. And, you know, in the winter, we don't have to worry about grass and weeds, so we don't need that person. So, yeah, I always thought that worked pretty well back then.
We have, most everybody in our office is cross-trained also, so I don't see any difference if we brought somebody in for four months that we could cross-train them. Right now, we help out Marie. We all carry iPads. You go right to OS ticket. You put your information. You snap your picture. You post it. You snap your picture. You send it right to her, which I'm sure she loves. So, we're all cross-trained. What I mean by that is if Rich Foley goes out to do a rental inspection, he goes to rental inspection and looks, wow, that grass is long. After the inspection's over, that's what he does, and we, he, we all put him in. I've been going out every day and dedicating two to three hours going out in different areas of town and tagging it. It was interesting to be talked to by the paper. There's not just one spot in town that's habitual. It's everywhere. There's no place that's immune to what we have going on right now.
So, once we get these, these, the people that are gone, we got people that just simply aren't taking care of the properties is what it boils down to. So, I mean, this is a, this is a solution, obviously, but it's really not a solution. We need to figure out a way to get people to take a little pride in their community, neighborhood coalitions of some sort, where people band together and take care of this stuff. You know, this is, this is, this puts a Band-Aid over the issue and helps us keep things under control, but it doesn't solve any problems.
I agree.
And so, how do we solve the dang problem? I wonder if it almost ties into what we were talking about for community imaging.
Well, it does.
And.
It does, but the problem is we got to first try to clean up some of the mess and then try to work.
No, I'm not arguing with that, but we need to figure out an actual solution.
Then try to get people and people in their neighborhoods to take a little pride in where they live. And, you know, the neighbor's house looks bad, then maybe see what.
We have, we have a couple of things that we're working on and we've laid some eyes on. I know Jessica's, and I think Patrick's office has got it right now. But a registry to start out with, a registry for vacant abandoned buildings. A lot of other cities do it. There's a cost that goes along with that. You register your building. You pay your fee. We inspect that yearly to see the windows starting to break, the roofs starting to fail, is it caving in? And we can stay on top of them things. Now, we already identify, one, how many we have. So, we know where people are at, where there could be fires, where there's, we know we have vacant buildings that burned. We have squatters in these buildings. We've seen it all over town. And we can monitor that, and I know there's well over a hundred. I know that for a fact. I don't know how far it goes, but I know we're above a hundred vacant and abandoned buildings right now. If you just drove through town one day, just start looking at all the little, and you can tell by all the postings are all over the windows. So, when you see them, start counting them up. It's kind of crazy when you, when you think about it.
Jeff, a question for you. I know, and I may have forgotten, we may have talked about this last week, Jessica. Some of these houses are in foreclosure. They've got for sale signs on them. They've got realty firms that are not in the city of Clinton. When you send out the notice that the grass needs to be cut, it goes to the property owner, right? And the property owner might be living right now in California.
Could be.
So.
We have several out of town folks that are nowhere close to here that own these properties.
Would it be possible that the ones, when you go out and you see that a property and it's got a Realtor listed to notify that Realtor, Realtor agency, that your, this property's being noticed for, you know, nuisances of grass?
You might get more action.
That they may want to take some action on it?
Okay.
Just as a thought.
I agree, and we do that. If we, we follow every lead we can to find somebody responsible for that party.
It's just one of those.
And we start with them, and some of the Realtors have been very, very, very helpful, very helpful. That they have actually one section that's all they deal with is property management on some of these. They are also the ones that will, if we do it, they pay their bill. It doesn't go to lean.
But I know we've probably got some that don't.
A lot of them that don't. It's not their responsibility is what, it's not ours. There's the person that's on it. We're just the one listing it.
Yeah, I just, it's too bad. How are you going to sell a house? You can't even see because the grass is so tall.
Well, that's why it's abandoned.
If you follow, if you follow social media, a funny thing last night, it's funny because it's not.
Yeah.
But if you follow social media last night, somebody snapped the picture of the one in Seventh Avenue you're talking about.
Yeah.
How do you sell this house and the grass is taller than the sign?
Yeah.
And it's embarrassing.
It is. Yeah.
No.
No, it isn't.
Just one, I have one last thing unless you have any more questions. Just the spring invoices right now to Hometown Landscaping for all the things they do. That includes nuisance cleanup and the grass, and this is, we have a lot pending, okay? We're up to fourteen thousand eight hundred and nine bucks, and that's from March first till now. So, this just kind of puts things in perspective.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Julie? I'd like to move this forward to the next meeting.
I just have a question.
Say it.
I know you're probably expecting this question, but, and I brought it up before. I, I guess, and first of all, I'll commend BNS for improving what they've done since they've taken over in the job that you do. But I, I guess I'm confused to say, to put it as mild as I can. Why we spend five or six months, or five or six weeks before the budget, and we do all this budgeting, and we put a lot of time and effort of our time, of extra time. And now, this is the second month we're coming back with something that I feel, and I, maybe I'm wrong, but I feel, but from what the chief said and what you've said, kind of backs it up that this has been a problem for a couple of years. Why wasn't this in the budget? I guess it's something that should have been, I think should have been there. We should have been discussing it then. We're now out of the budget. We got a little bit of surplus. But I also got to go back and think on an equity basis. We got a police department that, one camp says we need twenty-two new officers. Common sense says we probably need at least six or seven. And I think this should have been a budget item. And I think the idea of the battalion team should have been. I brought that up before. And we're not on cable, so I hope I'm not, I know it's, maybe seems like it's embarrassing, but it's just a question that keeps coming back to me that we're now four months out of budget, and this is a problem that's been going on for two years. Why don't we have it budgeted?
Well, the simple answer is that we didn't know that we even had a surplus to work with until basically you had to set the public hearing.
Well, the surplus should be the thing that.
But that's, that's the whole thing. This is, the way we budget internally, the way staff looks at this is we're not bringing forward any new requests when we know there's already reductions to be made. Throughout the entire budget process for the general fund, we were looking at having to cut dollars. And so, and that was up until the very end, where basically after you had had the last budget workshop, then Anita found out that there was additional valuation, which created the surplus situation. So, it really was a situation of timing. I would say that last year, we dealt with it. I mean, we, we, was it an ideal year for nuisance abatement? No, probably not. But one person was able to stick with it and did a decent enough job. We got through it. As Battalion Chief Chapman said right away, it's been, you know, this year has been our worst year that we've seen ever. Then last year was the worst year we've seen. And then this year, I would just say, I mean, it really is. You just, you see it everywhere. And I think it's just a problem that continues to snowball that we have not really been able to forecast in terms of what our needs would be. But budget-wise, we didn't even know we had a surplus until after.
But we knew we had a problem. We knew we had, we needed an extra body. And the thing, I think as far as equity goes, I, just because there's a surplus, I don't think it should be the first one to the trough gets the money. I, I don't think it's an equitable way of doing it. And I, I'm going to vote to do this, but I have a problem with, with, because we have a surplus, all of a sudden, we come up with something. I think it should have been discussed in the budget process so we have more than twenty minutes to talk about it.
Well, we can have another.
No, no, I'm, I'm what I'm saying. I just, I just don't think it's fair.
Let me, I'll let you tell, but let me just say something. I think the key word here is, you know, last year they dealt with it. And, you know, I've been here for, this is my eleventh year, and some years are worse, some years are better. Last year, yeah, it got bad, but you were able to deal with it. This year, we've had an inordinate amount of rain. I've never mowed so much so early in the spring, which has contributed to the fact, so I think the problem has gotten worse. It's become more obvious that there's people that are not taking care of it than it was last year. So, I don't think in January, we really had that at the top of the list of things that were a prime concern. It's now become a concern. We don't have to budget for, we don't have to put this person up, but we'll just have tall grass. Julie, what did you want to say?
My only thought is next year, when we, could you bring this forward at the next year's budget so that we're, we have a number to look at? You know, we can't say that we can fund it, but at least it's there and open for us to look at.
Sure. Couple, couple of things. Number one, I think when we went into budget time last year, we were instructed to not come looking to increase staff. So, that was out of the question. Number two, there's nobody at BNS complaining about being overworked. I mean, they're, they do a nasty job. They do a great job. Jeff got chased off a porch by a rat today, going out doing a grass complaint. It is not a pretty job. But there's nobody there complaining about this reason we're here is citizen-driven. This is people calling and saying, we're tired of living in this town with this mess. So, I mean, it's not like we're trying to build the employee base there. We would just like to please the citizens that are paying.
Well, you know, if you really talk about it, Councilmember Seeley was talking about citizens wanting to take pride. I think they've actually spoken.
Yeah.
They're actually. They're, they're actually would like to see the grass in the yards look better and tough, so that, okay.
They are. They're, they're, they're using the system. They're using the OS ticket system.
And they're asking for help, and so really, now it's up to the council to decide, well, do you wanna listen to them? And do you wanna do something? And granted, it's not in the budget, but you know, if there's dollars, if that, if we wanna make the town look better, you know, we're gonna have to spend some money.
Yeah, but again, I just wanted to give credit to BNS, 'cause they, it, it is an endless thankless deal some days. It's just like we can never get ahead. The grass keeps growing. They, they do.
And that's why I started out saying, they're doing a good job. I'm not, I'm not condemning the job, or in fact, I commend it. But the, I, again, you know, I, I brought it up before and I, I just, um, I just think these things and when you said we were told not to bring up asking for staff, I, I think you should bring up any, anything in budget. Because to me, that's the time to bring it up, whether, I don't think anyone should tell you not to bring up asking for staff if you need staff. I, it, it's a time to discuss it, and it, well, I, I mean...
We'll, we'll have it on the next year.
The hardest part about this job is the, the thing that, that gets people, um, surprised when they get in it is every once in a while, you gotta say no. And that's part of the job. And if we have to say no to a budget request for more manpower during budget time, that's fine. And, and again, like I said, I'm, I'm gonna vote for this to move it on, but I, I just really think to, to start coming in and, and doing things that aren't in the budget, when it's not an emergency thing, is, um, I'm just, uh, we, we got an increase in crime every year. So, uh, that's a problem we need to address with staffing, with police and fire and, and everything else. But I think there's a time and a place to do it, so, um, and again, I do commend BNS and, uh, Battalion Chief Chapman for his job and your leadership in getting that turned around, so, thank you.
Yep. Councilmember Sealy?
Thank you. I, I, a couple of quick questions. So, who goes out and takes a before and after pictures of this mowing?
Marie Van Anderson does that.
She does?
Yes.
Now, if the company's out there mowing, why aren't they taking a picture when they get there and a picture when they're done?
We have them do that also.
Okay.
That's something that's new this year.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Because there's no sense in having two different people going out there. They're doing it. Marie's got other stuff to do.
Marie has a, a, when she, we go out and tag, we take one photo with our tag on the door that gets the grass in there.
Yeah, which is, yep, while you're there.
That record.
Yep.
And then we have our contractor take before and after photos.
Okay.
We do that for nuisance cleanup also.
Yes. Yeah, okay, so they're doing it. I was just concerned that we were going out to the property four or five times in a matter of a week, and I can understand why you don't have time.
Sure.
You know, and then, so I, I'm fine with this, but I think in conjunction with it, I just, I did a little research before we came and, uh, you know, a lot of communities have what's called a community-driven nuisance abatement program. I think it's something we need to look into. I think we need to get it on a, a committee of the whole agenda. Get some data together and figure out how we can implement something like this in conjunction with hiring this other part-time person. And I'd like to, I'd like that to be as part of what we're moving forward and get that on a committee of whole for discussion if possible. So, if everybody agrees with that or not.
You're welcome to put anything you want on a committee of the whole. It just got put on.
So, do I have to make a motion to do this?
No, you don't have to make a motion for that.
It's on?
Yeah. But why don't you provide, um, Jessica with the information so that she can actually...
This is just, uh, Detroit, as we all know, had a lot of issues, and this is a, a program.
A bankrupt city?
Yeah.
Do they do better nuisance and...
Apparently, they, they've solved quite a few problems with this program.
With no money.
So, they said.
I wanna know how they do that.
Well, it's a community-driven abatement program.
Councilmember Gassman, what, you, I know you had a question.
Yes, uh, this year I've probably had two to three people per week call me with their nuisance issues. And I go take pictures and I file the complaint on the computer for them. And, uh, so I'd be happy if you got some extra help in BNS.
It does seem to be a...
But it does work. That, that website and everything works now, where we didn't have that before, so I can see you getting bombarded by it.
Well, actually, we may be getting, the citizens may be wanting to use that more than calling, so, so we probably actually increased our, our, our nuisance cleanup just because of it. Councilmember Dederman?
Does a, uh, adjoining property owners, can, can they mow the grass?
Surprisingly enough, we have a lot to do.
Yeah, they do.
Okay, I just commend people.
Absolutely.
Both sides would split and mow it. I would...
A lot of them do it.
I was just hoping there was no liability and stuff for them.
We actually have one in town that's turned into a community garden between the neighborhood. They took one empty lot, said, hey, what do we gotta do with this? We don't have anything to do with it. They tilled it up and they got a garden. They maintain it. It looks good.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Yeah, my mom cuts mine.
And the citizens that mow, we, we appreciate it.
Okay, do we have any other questions?
Well, I just, maybe something we might wanna look into to piggyback on Councilman Sealy's, uh, idea is all this money we're invested in doing letters and stuff like that, and maybe, uh, Pat will have to look into it. But is there a way we can incentivize the neighbors if they wanna cut it, that we pay them a stipend instead of going through all this minutia of sending out certified letters and two hundred dollars gets thrown in the m- if Bob will take care of the vacant lot next door that's been there for fifteen years, we pay Bob twenty bucks to do it.
Maybe I'll just not mow mine and let Bob come mow mine.
Well, no, I, what I'm saying though is, we did the same thing in copper, is some are doing it, so why not encourage them to do it and...
Why wouldn't they, wouldn't they then have to take a picture before and after so we have something to pay them?
How do we know they pay, they mowed it?
Yeah.
Well...
You know, this, this goes, this is three-fourfold here. This isn't just about getting grass mowed. This is about images of community property values. Um, this impacts a lot of things, so it doesn't just benefit someone, you know, just, oh, I want twenty bucks. There's, there's much more monetary gain there.
It's a whole nother discussion.
Grass, grass is just a portion of the puzzle.
It's, it's a discussion on the next item too, so...
Really, it's just a portion of the puzzle. We have so many people that get frustrated, come down, slam their hands, yell, scream. Why are you not tearing this house down that you had a fire at two years ago with, still has an owner, somebody paid the property taxes or bought the property taxes, and they're not maintaining? It's like, we don't own it. It's not ours. We've done inspections on it. It doesn't meet the criteria. There's a lot of frustration with the way the entire town looks, from garbage to grass to dilapidated buildings.
It's just information. I mean, we, we've lowered it every three years in a row. We still get blamed for raising taxes.
Sure, sure. Absolutely.
Okay, I think we've had enough discussion on it, so we do have, we had a motion and a second to move this forward to hire a nuisance part-time inspector, so we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gassman?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
McGraw?
Yes.
Dederman?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Alisi?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item is the request for assignment of tax certificates. Jessica?
Okay, I figured I should come up here, and there was another one I was able to confirm today, so that's the, what's on your, your sheet there. So, uh, this is something that I've been working with the Treasurer's Office on, Ian Lynch Dallas Office, Lynch Dallas on. There is a list of, of basically county-held tax certificates that we get. Some of them have properties on, or physical structures on the property or improvements on the property which really don't fit us taking them unless it's through a six, unless it's through a process where we'd be demoing them. Um, Battalion Chief Chapman just hit on that most of the time, the process that we, or the problem that we have is that, um, you know, we end up taking down properties and there is an issue with basically, um, you know, there's, we're then maintaining them. So, they end up in this vicious cycle. One way to try and take care of that cycle is to take a, to take a tax certificate, to, assignment of a tax certificate if the county has it. So, we're talking about some of the properties. I'm gonna show you our nuisance properties or ones that we are currently maintaining. Um, the only reason we wanna take something into our possession, um, is if we have a buyer for it on the backend. And I can tell you that's the situation with, with each of these. So, I kinda wanted to just start and go through. Um, I did these information sheets to give you an idea of what we had going on here. You know, the first one is six seventeen, Third Ave-, uh, Third Avenue South. Um, it's a former demolition property, and it is one that we are maintaining as a nuisance property. If I'm not mistaken, Jeff, isn't this the one where there's the community garden? Yeah, this is the one that right now, I mean, our maintenance of it's very minor since they've made it a, a garden, but I do have a buyer who wants this on the backend. One of the problems I will say is I can't take all of these off the list that the county has, most of the time because they're rental properties on each side, and nobody's wanting to add to the footprint of their property, um, to extend that and basically extend their maintenance of a rental property. So, that does tend to be one issue. Um, however, this is one where, um, like I said, six seventeen, Third Avenue South. I do have somebody who does want that on the backend.
What about their garden?
I mean, the neighbors put it on there knowing that it was not their property. I mean, it, one of them would have to buy it from us. We would do a sealed bid situation like we've been doing, and so they would have to then put a bid in for it, uh, against the other person. But those neighbors knew that they put that on there with the risk that it, it might not be their land for, forever. So, um, the others piece of this, which I should have gone back and said, this is not a quick process. There is like a ninety-day period, notification period to all potential, um, lien holders on the property before, um, we can actually get the tax certificate, um, from the county. So, this isn't quick, but it's at least a starting point for getting some of these, um, ownerless properties off of, uh, the county's books and ba- basically back onto the tax rolls. So, tw- uh, six seventeen, Third Avenue South is the first one. Um, twenty twenty-six McKinley Street is the second one that I have here. And I will say that, um, this one is a nuisance property as well. Um, the house that's right here at twenty thirty is one that we just demoed this year. Um, and so I have someone who is interested in both properties. We're probably gonna file that lien as soon as we, um, do final payment on it just to get it through that process of, um, having a tax certificate that's probably, um, owned by the county sooner rather than later, um, with that process. Um, on the next page, this is an interesting one, and I, I can't explain it. There is a property on Hoover Island, um, which, uh, basically is owned by the county. The tax certificate's owned by the county as well. And so, um, I do have an, uh, probably more than one, um, entity that would be interested in this because it is a, a buildable property. It's, um, fifty-four by two fifty, so it's a decent-sized property.
This isn't the one where they burnt the, the new fireboat?
It's, um, that's actually, that was right there.
Oh.
So, yeah.
Next door, next door, okay.
Um, the next property is one that is also being maintained as a nuisance property by BNS, two twelve Second Avenue South. Um, this is one that has a lot of history with it, and by the end of the summer, there's gonna be more than fifty thousand dollars worth of liens. The thing to remember too, and this is probably the appropriate one to talk about it, if we request assignment of the tax certificate, the county's Board of Su- or request to the County Board of Supervisors is to abate all the taxes. So, therefore, all those liens go away. Anything that we have is, uh, basically have recorded as a special assessment in the Finance Department, then has to be written off. It's gonna mess with some cash and some of our funds. Um, everything for nuisance abatement is run through a special revenue fund because, um, it is a, it's a different process. There is a lot of leaning that happens, so everything's kinda confined to one fund. That fund is gonna have some cash problems and really does have some cash problems right now that we're gonna have to talk about a long-term strategy for correcting that as well. Um, but that is a larger conversation, but this one is a good example of, you know, we, we can put these out to, out to bid and get sealed bids on them, um, but it will be with basically zero due on them, and that's because those taxes are abated by the county. So, this would be a big one, but, uh, a- as you can see, it's, it's just a tiny little lot, and, uh, there's basically one person who wants it, and you can pretty much figure out who it is on, on this one. The other one that I put at your desk today, 'cause I was just able to confirm it, um, is four twenty-seven, Twenty-Fifth Avenue South. And this is where the owner next door is actually maintaining it, and, uh, he's wanted it for years. It again has some very high lien amounts on it, um, but we are not adding to those liens at this point. But it's, again, it's a county-held tax certificate. There are a few others too that, um, I had tried to make contact with people, um, last week and today about whether or not they were still interested in something they had told me about, you know, a long time ago, and I had a note for. So, I would hope that there's still potentially more that I can bring forward. But at this point, I am asking for a resolution to move forward to the next council meeting, um, to move forward with accepting the assignment of these tax certificates. And in addition to that, what I was also looking for is that if this is the process where if I have a, a potential buyer on the backend that I don't have to come to a future committee of the whole and can put a resolution on an agenda to accept assignment of that tax certificate, um, but only if there is an owner, a potential owner on the backend.
So, you want approval on this, and you want approval on the process of doing this?
It could be a resolution wherein the, be it further resolved, the city administrator may bring, um, other tax certificate assignments directly to the council, something like that.
I'd move it forward, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion.
Say it.
We have a second. Is there any other discussion or questions?
So, our costs in this is going to be the process, basically, and what we're losing on what we've leaned, basically.
We're, we're gonna lose what we've leaned. I mean, that's, that's the biggest thing here, and that's where the, um, and there's going to be unpaid property taxes as well. Generally, on vacant lots, you're not talking about that being a lot of money, but like I said, that two twelve Second Avenue South goes all the way back to two thousand. Um, so, the school and the county lose amounts here too.
But, but going forward, it goes back on the tax rolls.
Correct.
Yes. How now are we certain the county will approve?
Um, I believe, uh, and I don't know if Pat wants to potentially correct me on this, but I believe if we request abatement of the taxes, they by law have to. It's a shall, I believe, in Iowa code that they have to abate those taxes.
That was always my understanding.
Yeah, they, they, they typically don't, um, and it, I've not tested that to see how much leverage we really have to force their hand, though.
I, I believe, um, Pat, that Steve had sent me a memo that said that it's a shall. Um, I can tell you that, um, working with the county this year, I received an email from the, uh, one Board of Supervisor member who, they had someone come directly to them offering to buy it at a reduced price, and he checked with me to make sure that we were okay with that, um, of which, why wouldn't we be? It was one we were maintaining as well.
I was, I think if we can work together on it, it's to everybody's benefit, especially if they're back on the tax rolls, so...
So, what you're saying is the state, the state code says if it's requested, they shall, not that they can't.
Yeah.
They have to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, some of the...
While lean, let's press the issue then.
Yep.
Also, i- is there gonna be some, we've talked about that amount of sewer bills that's never gonna get resolved? Is this gonna have some sewer bills that are gonna be written off too?
Um, it, yeah, so the way things work when they go to lean is they're no longer part of our active accounts receivable billing. They basically just become a special assessment. And so that, um, special assessment, um, there is, there is a, a rolling balance there, um, that, you know, regardless of what the charge is for, um, as taxes are paid, the county remits to us those special assessments and lets us know where, where those are at, basically for what purposes, and then we adjust our balances, um, and, and credit our cash. Um, so, it's, uh, it's one of those things where we'll have to go back and basically do the breakdown, which I'd wanna do sooner rather than later, so you have an accurate picture of what each of these will be. Um, I can tell you the, the one on Second Avenue South at more, you know, fifty thousand is going to be the worst one. Um, the others don't come quite as close to that. Um, but, uh, but yeah, we'll be having to write off, um, some of our special assessment balances, um, if this were to take place.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Are we gonna get a report on what the total value, the costs are?
Yeah, could we get, on each piece, could we get how much we've got invested in it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll confirm that. Um, I mean, that was the plan with the, the county treasurer, to get the reports on what's actually owed and, and, um, back taxes and special assessments.
Any other questions? Hearing none, could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember McGraw?
Yes.
Dederman?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Alisi?
Yes.
Gassman?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number three, a new liquor license for a long-awaited business Buffalo Wild Wings.
This comes before you, Your Honor and counsel, uh, as an FYI. It, um, Buffalo Wild Wings has met all the criteria for their liquor license, and, uh, they have met with BNS, fire, police, and they're really good to go. They, uh, say their prospective date to open is in August, and so this just comes before you because they're ready to go right now? And why delay it? That's just one more step that, you know, they can set aside and move on.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Any other discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Alisi?
Yes.
Gassman?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
McGraw?
Yes.
Dederman?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, people that have been asking when it's gonna open have an idea. And our next item, number four, strategic plan update goal number three. Jessica, you should have just stayed out there.
Well, I, I was telling Pat earlier, she could have put her item ahead of mine, and I would have stayed out here, so...
I'll keep that in mind next time.
She was just trying to be nice and save herself for... Um, we talked that, uh, to kinda get the strategic plan, keep it moving along, we'd have some of these discussions at committees of the whole where it was a lighter schedule. where it was a lighter schedule, and we're ten till eight, so I think it's a, a lighter schedule here. So I'm gonna do just a, a few things here, kind of the way we, we did it previously.
We'll need some lights up.
Um, our conversation tonight about properties and nuisance and stuff is really, um, appropriate because that's, that's really what this goal is about. It's about our community, um, the, the physical, the economic, and the, the environment of, of our community. And so that's where, uh, I think it's an appropriate time to, to have a discussion about this. Um, to kinda go back through, um, the way that we have the objectives. I'll start with objective one. And for those that weren't here last time, anything that's in bold was something that we added to it based on the budget prioritization. So some of this stuff in bold is stuff that's been added into what was originally handed out to you for the strategic planning session. So, um, and to back up to, this, our goal and our objectives and what we're gonna do, that's really the, what do we wanna do? And how will, how will we get their actions? And then I'm gonna toggle over to this. This is, the spreadsheet is the work plan. So this is really, you know, thinking July first of twenty sixteen to June thirtieth of twenty eighteen, um, what do we want to do and when do we wanna do it? So these are more of the action items which you'd be updated on. So we're gonna kinda toggle back and forth between these as we go, um, objective by objective. So, um, those are both in your packet, and I will do the best I can at my toggling. So, um, to start with the first, um, objective, it's, uh, initiatives that contribute to the physical and environmental health and sustainability of the city and its residents. And this is one that's kind of been undefined for the most part, but we've, we've added some things. Um, a sustainability plan is something that was on there. That was really something I was hoping that Augustana would, would have been able to do. They weren't able to put it on their list, so that one's still hanging out there. Um, continuing the pavement management program, um, continuing to pursue funding alternatives for the long-term control plan for twenty nineteen and beyond. And then we added to continue to address nuisance issues and removal of dilapidated buildings. And so as you think about really our, our physical environment and the environmental health, is there anything else that you are thinking of that really should be added on there? That's, uh, um, we should be doing something related to this, um, in order to improve our physical and environmental health?
Well, what about the recycling? We really don't do a, a great job with that, I don't think.
Thank you. Yes, I was gonna say that is something that is missing there. Continue to or promote, promote recycling?
We have to have a way that we can get rid of people's products that they, they know we're not just landfilling them. Right now we have buckets and most people believe that we're just throwing it all in the same heap anyhow, and so therefore they're not doing it.
Um, we've talked a lot about single-stream recycling, so I'm gonna phrase this as promote recycling and look into single-stream options because that has been a topic of discussion here quite a bit recently.
And the one in Davenport's gonna open up here in August, so it's a good time to.
Yeah.
Get on it.
If that looks good, then we'll toggle over here, and, and this is, this is kinda where these things become actions, and we'll, we'll need to add an action related to recycling, um, that the council would consider a sustainability plan. Um, pavement management, uh, program funding continues, uh, that we request re- for review of long-term control plan for state officials. Um, this is something that actually did, did recently happen. We did that, uh, third amendment to the consent decree back in January, which was a benefit to us by delaying some projects and then, um, advancing some forward. And so I wanna keep that one in there as an ongoing thing because those are things that we're going to continue to do. Um, I think we've learned that, you know, as, as long as we're meeting the, the deadlines that we need to meet and doing well on some other ones, um, that the DNR is open to hearing about the rearranging of some of the projects that, to make more sense, basically. Um, you can't write a plan for just one point in time and expect that five years later, it's still going to be exactly how it was supposed to, um, be undertaken. Um, council reviews a report with recommendations for funding for the long-term control plan beyond twenty twenty. I think I've got, uh, differences in numbers there. Just gonna circle that, so I correct that. Um, council considers, uh, implementation of best management practices for eliminating sewer cross-connects. This is actually related to some of the work that Augustana did, um, in the, um, I'm gonna get the basin number wrong. There was a basin area where they did a door-to-door survey to try and determine, um, how many people had cross-connects. And then, uh, a policy class in the winter term, um, has put together some research related to incentivization of eliminating cross-connects. Cross-connects meaning, um, you have your, basically your house's stormwater system connected into the city sewer system. So if we're eliminating our, um, combined sewer system, then those connections need to be eliminated as well. So, um, so that's something that I don't have a report. Uh, once we do have a report, that's probably when it would come back to you all, um, for further discussion about some things to do. But, um, from the presentations and the posters that they had, they do have some good data and recommendations.
Well, where's the water gonna go? I mean, a good example is behind the Van Allen Building. Haven't we flooded Vogel several times with water issues?
Mm-hmm. When, and I wanted to say, you know, downtowns presented different areas, uh, uh, different, um, issue with a lot of impervious surface, or, uh, yeah, impervious surface. We're talking more residential areas, um, and basically eliminating those in residential areas, and, and we.
There was an ordinance years ago that you had to pay so many bucks to even be hooked to it.
And so the only ordinance that is on our books right now is basically, uh, one that's related to all new structures. And I can't remember what year that went into place, but it basically required that any new structures could not do that cross-connection. But there's never been an action to go back through and eliminate the cross-connections. And so, um, that's where there's, there's a discussion to be had there.
I don't know. I guess I'm probably a little confused, but they to- they made all of us cut them off.
Yeah, years ago.
Years ago.
I wanna say it was.
Fifteen years ago.
Oh, more than that.
Cause I had to remove mine.
Yeah.
I, I think if they.
And I just put a long pipe on it to my neighbor's house.
Yeah.
There, there are, there, there are, I mean, in the area that was, was surveyed, I mean, there were ones that did come back with cross-connections that exist, so.
The city did have a policy, and I forgot what department was supposed to go out and enforce it, but no, everybody was supposed to pull their, their dr- sewer, storm drains out of the ground that were going into the.
Yep.
Sewers and strain it out into the yard, because I remember having to do that, and you got a nasty letter in the mail warning you that if you didn't do it, you were subject to a fine.
It was actually, uh, George Langmac was the city administrator.
You're talking, that's probably twenty years ago?
Probably, it was in the nineties, I think the early nineties.
But that did happen.
It did happen.
Boy, that fine for twenty years is gonna be steep.
Well, and, and that's where I can tell you that there is not an ordinance that, that prohibits that. It was for new con- it's for new construction only.
It was, it went after me. After I had, right here in, I call it the downtown area, but it was on the residential. Yeah, and everybody in the neighborhood, and everybody started flooding each other's basements because we didn't have anywhere else for the water to go.
We'll have to do some research, cause I think something changed, because we still have a downspout fee that people get billed for, where they were allowed to keep them.
No, that was the whole thing. You, you had to pay the ten bucks or whatever it was, or you couldn't have them.
No, this was all the residential.
And all the rest of them was who got cut off.
But I can tell you.
Cause they couldn't take them off the downtown one.
Our ordinances, as they exist today, do not prohibit that for basically grandfathered properties, if you'd wanna call them that. So, we'll have to do some research into that. Um, that's not information that we had that was available to Augustana either. Um, but, uh, we'll, we'll do some more looking into that. Um, I know on the next week's committee of the whole, we're going to have some recommended changes to chapter fifty-two, which is the sewer use ordinance, and chapter fifty-three, which is the stormwater ordinance. Um, really glancing over what Augustana has recommended because we don't have a report yet, so. Um, but this is going to be a topic of discussion. I mean, just to, to tell you why we had Augustana focus on the area we did was because, um, it's all related to sizing of a pump station. There's to be a Bluff Boulevard pump station. And if you can, if you can determine how much stormwater you're intercepting now, that's part of the combined sewer system, and you can find ways to eliminate that, then you don't need to size your pump station as big as you might, um, based on flows for people who are cross-connected. So, there's logic behind it, and that's the whole thing. This is a, a longer discussion, there's gonna be reports, but that's, that's why that's in there is because it's something that Augustana did work on. But thank you for the information. I will see what we can come up to, come up with tomorrow. Do you have that on your list, Pat? So, um, and then, uh, we added, um, from the, the last meeting, the, um, nuisance abatement building removal. Um, I kept this pretty broad in considering alternative options. We can define it further. You considered an option tonight, which is assignment of tax certificates. Another process that we've just briefly hit on is the six fifty-seven A process, which might be a solution to some of this. Um, I've asked the city attorney to pre- prepare a memo for you on what sixty fif- six fifty-seven A is, and what it does, and what it would mean to the city as well. Because I think this is one of those, um, this allows the city to intervene and become the owner of the property before we would demolish a structure. So we don't end up having to basically keep a property in no man's land till it gets to a county tax certificate, where then we can reclaim it to give it to the next-door neighbor, or to sell it to the next-door neighbor. So, it allows us to basically intervene at an earlier period of time. Um, also, as the city attorney mentioned, that, uh, you know, we, we do wanna talk about, um, you know, civil, uh, civil citations, municipal infractions and, infractions and judgments for some property owners. That's not a one-size-fits-all thing, and it is probably something more that would not fit necessarily just a grass and weeds violator. We need somebody who's got more, um, more nuisance violations. So, I've kept that broad, but I want you to know what that encompasses, and that those are hot topics in, um, my office and in building and neighborhood services. So, we'll, we can define that a little bit more, um, if you'd like, but otherwise, it's, it's encompassing a lot of different possibilities at this point.
I'd like to go back to, on the side here about the total pavement condition index of sixty by twenty twenty-one.
I, I don't wanna focus on the stuff in the blue side column yet because all of that's gonna change. I just didn't wanna remove my text boxes from this and then have to go back and create them and lose all my formatting, so.
So we're gonna talk about this sometime?
Yes, so, and to, to kinda give you next steps, next steps, once we get through all the goals, um, I'll be sending you a Survey Monkey survey for you to prioritize your top five, um, objective, or, uh, action items in each one, so that we can start assigning dates that fit with a priority, um, calendar. And then once we have those dates at the same time, then that's when we're going to be trying to come up with what are, what are ways that we can measure our effectiveness? Um, you know, and, and try and make them outcome-based, not just, uh, output-based, so bigger overview there. Um, we did add recycling here, so we need to, um, I'm gonna add in, uh, council considers options for single-stream recycling. I think that probably encompasses really the big action that you're probably looking next, um, for recycling. Is that a fair statement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Then we will go back to this screen, and we will go to objective two. Objective two is one that I know we've had a lot of discussion on some of these items, and it's related to the economic health of the community. Economic health really meaning also economic development as well. And so, um, we have, we have a lot of things in, under this objective as well, which is really, uh, developing and promoting the air, or the rail and air park, um, continuing to develop and promote the Lions Business and Tech Park. Uh, continue to work with existing groups to promote Clinton as the community of choice for Thompson Prison employees. Um, develop a strategy for development on Liberty Square. Uh, review and update urban renewal plans of the city. Continue to work with C R D C on an economic development strategy and marketing. Um, develop an economic incentive policy and develop a plan for selling, um, city-owned lots in South Clinton. That covers a lot of areas, um, related to economic development. Is there anything specific in terms of an area, um, that isn't addressed here in terms of something that we should thinking, be thinking about strategically?
I, I would like you to have a program where you can rehab some of these homes instead of tearing them all down. I know we offer some areas twenty-five thousand dollars worth of remodeling if the homeowner will live in it for five years, that kinda stuff. But maybe you can adopt a program that you just take this house and put twenty-five in it, and then if you find somebody to buy it, they have to stay there for five years or something, because I, I don't know if anybody added up the hundreds of homes that were missing because of all of our South Clinton projects, Liberty Square, and many others. We just can't keep taking homes out. We gotta try to keep some of them, and business buildings and whatever. Tearing them down is, uh, a more costly thing in the long run than redeveloping them. And E. Buke was a forerunner of that, I think.
I agree. Paul, but don't we have a problem for those block grants? We can't even get people to apply for that twenty-five thousand?
It was difficult this year. Um, it, it's because they have to be owner-occupied, and, um, the areas where we tend to meet the income standards um, are ones where there's a lot of renters.
Yeah, but I'm just saying it's a city program. It's got nothing to do with granting.
Um, let me, let me back up and tell you, um, I'm gonna make a note for myself, you know, as we, uh, we just talked here about, um. Whoops, where am I? Okay, as the council considers alternative options for nuisance abatement building removal, six fifty-seven A could be your answer. Because it just, there's certain criteria that you have to meet under state code in order for a judge to consider giving the city title to the building. But that doesn't have to be a building that we just wanna demolish. That can be a building that meets the requirements and is not so far gone. So there is the possibility of tying something like that into six fifty-seven A. And so, um, are you comfortable with me including that, kind of under that umbrella of, of this, uh, considering the options for nuisance abatement building removal?
It's just that you need to keep some of the buildings, yeah.
Well, I, I'm saying, I like Councilmember Gassman. I think it should be a separate item.
Yeah.
That the, the city developed a plan to preserve some, preserve, you know.
Some properties?
You know, I don't wanna say derelict property, but I'm looking for another word there.
Abandoned?
Abandoned property.
Maybe even before they become abandoned.
Yeah.
Some people are just struggling to maintain them.
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately.
To help maintain properties as opposed to demolition, something of that nature.
The other thing I think we should consider here is we've been very busy tiffing things like in a large apartment complex, but yet the person that owns a three-plex on Fifth Avenue South is getting nothing to, no incentives, but we're using, we're giving out incentives otherwise, so I think it's something we need, you know, if we're gonna be giving them out here, we need to be looking at the other side of the, the picture too.
We have not tiffed a large apartment complex. Um, that's tax abatement, a completely different thing.
It's still in the sense.
And that property that you just referenced on Fifth Avenue South would be eligible for the same thing.
I, I wasn't talking about the one with the long grass.
No, I'm just saying that the multifamily residential and improvement projects under urban revitalization are treated the same way, whether it's new construction, and I think on the commercial side, they have to meet fifteen percent.
I guess what we really need to work on as a city is getting these things out, that they're available for people to utilize. We need to better communicate, basically.
Okay, let's, let's go back. I'm, I'm thinking the, the item related to the rehabbing of homes is really a, an objective one, um, area.
Probably. You know, I guess, yeah, rehabilitate homes or, you know, instead of just letting them fall down, letting them fall down, see what we can do to save them.
I'll wordsmith that a little bit more, and I'm gonna make my space here on my spreadsheet to, to add something that corresponds with that.
But, but then under economic health, I think, I think Councilmember Sealy, that we need to be able to promote or market, um, economic incentives that are available for, you know.
Well, shouldn't we even mail everybody, uh, the program that's in the area, instead of waiting for them to ask?
Yeah, we, we need to be proactive.
Like the block grants, I can't, I find it hard to believe we can't find people to take free money.
It's, but you have to meet income requirements, and you had to be owner-occupied.
But how did we reach out to those people?
There were, there were multiple direct mailings to that defined neighborhood, as well as I believe somebody also, um, after we didn't get a good response initially, I believe it was our engineering department went around and did door hangers on it.
Did you do that up at my end of town? I don't think so.
It was south of Main Avenue, nineteenth to Main, basically.
And like from Second Street to the river or something?
I think.
Cause I don't even remember anybody getting anything.
Well, and not.
It's all taken up now.
Trying to fix the neighborhoods.
That's what it is, because, and the, my point behind that is, is our neighborhoods, a lot of them have become predominantly investor-owned, yes. So, you can fix up the single-family dwellings that are owner-occupied all you want, but it's not gonna help anyone in the long run.
No, but.
Well, because a lot of the mansions were, are now turned into multiple housing units.
And most of the block grants only, you had to turn it back into a single-family dwelling.
Well, when I had that large house. Well, when I had that large house on Fifth Avenue and Five Hundred Block, people, all they thought I was gonna do with it is turn it into apartments. No way.
Can, can this be something that's like, we go to the legislature on?
For, I guess.
Because I don't know where CDBG originates from.
It's a federal grant program.
We're not gonna get anywhere with the Fed.
Yeah, and, and I mean, that's.
Clearly, that's like the lost cause.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it's, it's something that we're, we're probably not going to be, we're probably going to be applying for another sewer grant this year with CDBG. Versus going for another housing one, which we've kinda been doing on a two-year rotation, just because this, this existing grant program is taking a lot longer to, to complete. I mean, it's still not completed, so.
Yeah, but there's, there still are economic incentives out there that aren't block grants, but I don't think anybody's aware of what they are.
Yeah, and that's where, as you'll recall, I think it was in February was when we updated the urban revitalization plan. And the urban revitalization plan is the tax abatement incentives that are basically available to just about everybody. As a residential property owner, if you do a project that adds ten percent or more to the value of your property, by February first of the next year. You can then apply for a fifty percent abatement on that improvement for three years. So, it's not a total, it's not a, a total abatement of taxes. It's not going to abate, you know, fifty percent of what you've already been paying, but it's abating fifty percent of the improvement that you've added. If it's a new house, then it is your total taxes, basically.
And then you gotta think about, and then people do stuff for their houses, it's easier for them just to not say anything with that kinda program.
You have to get a building permit, that's part of it.
Well, it, it's easier not to go through that process.
Yeah, it, it is.
So, it's kind of a flawed system, if you think about it.
Unfortunately, that's what we have available to us under state law.
These are things we need to look at though and explore different options.
I, I would say that we're taking advantage of everything that really is available to us under state law at this point. Outside having established urban renewal areas in some, some areas of the city, which we don't have. But urban renewal isn't really going to be something that your average homeowner is gonna be able to take advantage of. So, it's, it's the communication on the tax abatement, that is the what, most widely available. But I would think that if I could save a hundred bucks a year, potentially, it would be worth it to fill out an application and submit it to the city for.
A hundred bucks, what do you mean?
Well, abatement, like on, even a small.
If you do an improvement?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, and that's what it boils down to, so people are remodeling the inside of their house. If, and if they don't get a permit, the assessor doesn't know, nothing changes. There's no, there's no increase in taxes and there's no savings to be had. What gives them the incentive to go out and tell everybody that they've increased the value of their property? There isn't.
You've just answered your own question. The incentive to get the permit is that you get the abatement on the back end. If you didn't get a permit for the work, you're not eligible for the abatement.
But there's really no incentive because it's a wash and then you end up paying taxes, what, three years down the road, higher taxes?
I don't think it's a wash, I mean, because you're gonna be paying.
No, you'd end up losing money.
But you're gonna end up paying on those improvements at some point. And that's where I think, that's part of it, is you're not eligible for tax abatement if you don't get that building permit upfront.
It's not a good system.
Like I said, it's, it's what's available to us under Iowa law.
I know, I'm just saying we need to look at things like that because it's not, it doesn't incentivize anybody to do anything.
I think we need to be careful here because you, you, the statement was made that if you get a building permit, you can get a tax abatement. Not everything qualifies for you to get a permit.
It has to be a ten percent improvement in your valuation and that's, that's the, that's the key.
It sounds like if you, if you got a permit and put in a new water heater.
We'll have a ration.
And I should clarify too, on the commercial side, it's fifteen percent. So, there, there are thresholds that you have to meet and that's basically where our verification of the work being done is the building permit. So, you can't even start that process unless you have a building permit.
But not everything you do, even though you get a building permit, actually increases your taxes. It's really probably an addition or a new garage. You know, a new roof would not increase your value because technically that shouldn't change.
You gotta have a roof.
You have to have a roof, even though it might be forty years old, but you have to have a roof. So, yeah, it's, it, it isn't, it, it's a, it's not perfect.
Well, my hope is that you will all see more people applying to you in February. Basically, it's the first council meeting in February is where we move those resolutions forward for you to consider, to either approve or deny based on whatever reasons. So, we've not had too many people that have applied for that. I think maybe, you know, five to six, a handful each year for any tax abatement incentives. And so, we'll, we'll see what happens. We've got a, a modified, you know, program for where we were before. That benefits probably, I would say, commercial entities more than residential entities at this point due to the multifamily qualification now, so.
Do the people, when they apply for a permit, do they know about this tax abatement? Do we?
I think that's why it's up here, so, I mean, it's not something that we've promoted. I, I mean.
We need to hand them the form.
Here's, the, the honesty of the situation is economic development falls with me as one of my multiple duties. And so, the communication of those incentives, it took a long time to just even get that plan developed and go through all the, the hoops that we had to jump to to do that. And so, that's not something that's been ranking highly on, on my list. However, if you put it on the list, which you have, then that's when it, it ranks higher on my list, so.
Probably go back ten years ago, people could build a new house and didn't know they were eligible for the tax abatement. Until the first year had gone by and then they found out in the second year they'd already missed one because no one told them. And so, yeah, I think that if we're going to try to get people to do these things, we have to assist them by letting them know these programs are available.
Yep, so.
It should be on back of the permit or something.
We also need to make sure that they know if they're building a new home and that area's tiffed, they don't get the abatement.
And that's, that is stated in the urban revitalization plan. We need to basically get the urban revitalization plan defined, so it's more of a pamphlet and that's not been done, so.
They don't wanna, they don't wanna read a book, they just wanna have something simple.
When I read this list of the things under this economic health, I think there's a glaring misomission here and that's our downtown. We need a plan for downtown.
You're, you're jumping ahead of me. That's actually in Objective Three, where we continue to work with the Downtown Alliance and Lions Businesses and Professionals Association, so.
No, I, I think she's talking about having the master plan.
Yeah, and that's, that's where it's on the next, it's on the work plan in the next one, so that's where, it, it is in there. I didn't forget that, I didn't ignore that from our last one, so.
Well, before you, before you jump off the three there, back up on this development of selling the city-owned property in South Clinton. Will you, when you bring that forward, I think it was probably before the new council members got seated. We addressed this, so we had some very good information of the, the, how the bar's been raised on the property values there. If you don't have those still, I still have them. I mean, there, there is prices paid there that we need to take in consideration before we give it away to, to anybody. I mean, we, if you remember the repercussions of selling the dock, I don't wanna go back there. You know, those, those property values quadrupled, so if the new members don't have those documents, there's over two hundred sales that have some pretty hefty prices in it. And I think we should be getting the same price everybody else did, so.
And, and the way that conversation kinda started at the last, at the strategic planning workshop was. It needs to start with a map and probably a work session because our parcels, most of them are not connected. And so, then, then you have to figure out what is it that's actually sellable and buildable for the zoning that's there. And so, that's, that's where, this is likely something that'll come forward to you on a future work session, including the, the past information as well.
Yeah, there's a lot of variables there, a lot.
Highest of best use, I mean, with, you know, when eighteen thousand dollar, eighteen thousand dollar houses went for eighty thousand dollars. I think we should be entitled to the same price that the market put on there, the railroad end, other buyer, sellers have got it, so. I don't wanna see that just kinda slip through where we wind up giving it away and lose millions of dollars.
Well, that's why it says developing a plan.
Now, Jessica, why wouldn't the downtown and the development of the downtown have anything, that, I mean, to me, that contributes to the economic health of the city?
I think the way to think about this is, these are all pretty much things where, where, wherein, these are our plans. As you start to talk about, you have the Lions Business and Professionals Association and the Downtown Clinton Alliance. Who are two outside groups that we don't have any direct control over, who are really working. We work in partnership with them to enhance the community, not necessarily, I mean, and economic development. But it's really more of, we don't just do economic development with either of those entities.
Well, then I think what needs to be on this list then is, is our review and analysis of our current code structure for the downtown buildings and requirements for those. And, and.
And, and that's where.
And that's, that's us, that's on us.
I, and, and that's where I would say, that's us in conjunction with, with the Downtown Clinton Alliance. And that's, that's try, how we've tried to do things here since I've been here. It's not always been perfect, I, I know for those that are on there. But we try to work in conjunction on things where, where there are issues. And so, that's where I, let's, let's wait until Objective Three to talk more about downtown and Lions.
Okay.
If we can, because that's really where they're at right now, because those are community partnerships that we have. There are things that, yes, we need to, that we can do and that we have the control over. There are plenty of those things. But we try to do those things as partnerships, not as individual actions. So, if there's nothing more to add to Objective Two, under economic development, we'll switch over here. And here's where we have some things, knowing that we'll, we'll need to add some things here. This is something we'll, we'll try and schedule. It's, it seems like it's August of every year that we're meeting about the rail park. So, that, continue to meet and formulate a plan for the future of the rail park. This now involves not only our fellow owner of CRDC, but we have a broker with both of us. So, more than likely, we try and schedule something this year and ongoing with the broker to meet with, with.
It'd be logical to have all three involved.
Exactly, to have that joint discussion. Council considers urban renewal projects for the Lions Tech Park. I know this is, this is something that's ongoing. We don't currently have a development agreement with the Lions Tech Park Board, but we have a draft that's out there. And there's just some information and probably some, some other things to, to move this forward. But we're, we're on a timeline where if you don't have anything in front of you, probably before the first of November. There's not anything that could be potentially certified as debt for this next year. However, we have, in conjunction with the Lions Business and Tech Park Board for this upcoming fiscal year. We did certify debt for completion of the trails and sidewalks between Mill Creek and where everything connects with, I think, Tenth Street Northwest, which was new. So, we still have some partnership things that are going on there, but there's some other things that can be considered there as well. Council supports opportunities associated with the Thompson Prison. We've really been looking at those on an as-needed basis, but those are, that's an ongoing thing. The Thompson Prison isn't open yet, there's still many opportunities there. Council considers a development strategy for Liberty Square. We've talked that we would have a, a special committee of the whole work session to really go over some of those items as well, because it's a long discussion. This shouldn't be there. Council reviews the Clinton Urban Revitalization Plan. You've already reviewed it and you've already updated it, and so, that's one that needs to be struck through. I missed that one. Council reviews urban renewal plans for multiple areas. This is something where we've, we've done quite a bit here in the last year. There's still some areas we need to pay some attention to, upcoming. South Clinton being one. We need to have a discussion about Liberty Square. I'd hopefully, hopefully be able to tie that in there. But there's, there's some things, there's some plans that have been in existence that we haven't updated. As well as Lions is not an urban renewal area, so there's a conversation to be had there as to whether that's something you wanna do. Council reviews joint marketing materials with CRDC. Council considers an economic incentive policy. Council considers development strategy for South Clinton. And then, I'm just going to put in here. Economic development incentives. Are promoted to all eligible. Property owners. And I think that covers the, the communication piece. And so, that really, that gives, gives something there. Well, we, we can start something in terms of promotion. So, if that looks good in terms of just some actions, I realize a lot of those are broad and are going to involve a lot of meetings. But I think that's at least defined here at this point and we'll put some dates with that in the next step. So, now for Objective Three of Goal Three. This, this is really sort of an all-encompassing thing. It says community, but it should probably say also enhancement of quality of life. Because that's really what this objective is directed towards, is enhancement of quality of life. And so, under here, we've had a plan for developing, developing a plan for utilizing the TIF LMI dollars. We've considered requests, but we don't have a formal plan of when, of how we would consider things. Continue to work with the Downtown Clinton Alliance and Lions and Business Professionals Association to enhance grassroots efforts. Work with Chamber on a marketing slash image campaign for the city, which was something that was added at our last meeting. Continue to offer high-quality recreational opportunities and destinations. Continue promotion of building code and rental code. Adopt an urban forest management plan, enhance bikeability and walkability of the city. Enhance historic preservation efforts and enhance ADA accessibility. And so, you can see that there are a lot of those are, are broad, because there are a number of quality-of-life initiatives that you can fit under there. Is there anything that needs to be better defined in terms of there, that's not, before we get to the work plan? The work plan's going to have more definition to each of those items.
I think the title should be changed. I think, Consider Initiatives That Contribute To The Quality Of Life. Because development and enhancement of the community just, I don't know.
Vague.
Yeah, it's vague. People understand quality of life.
Is it, yeah, is it quality of, what, what, quality of place or quality of life?
Consider Initiatives That Contribute To The Quality Of Life, very simple.
How about enhancement of the quality of life or enhancement of quality of life?
Yeah, that, that's okay too. I think the key, enhancement, community, people don't get what that is. Quality of life is kind of a, the word that people would understand.
Well, that was switched to quality of place, wasn't it? We don't call it quality of life anymore.
We do.
It's some economic thing. They said it's now quality of place.
I think we're still calling it quality of life.
Well, you're, the place is what creates the, the element of the quality of life.
You're ahead of us.
All right, fine.
I thought we're doing pretty good. I thought we're getting pretty good and we moved up from a community to quality of life.
Now, this misses the, the downtown and the code and all that.
Actually, it covers it twice and I didn't realize where it covers it twice. So, you have to continue to work with the Downtown Clinton Alliance and Lions Business Professionals and continue promotion of building and rental code. So, there's two areas where you could.
Building and rental code, that doesn't address the issues with the codes currently for the downtown buildings.
I think you need to go to the work plan one. I'd like to wait for just a second.
Yeah, I think what we're talking about here, these are not necessarily specific actions. These are, are just things that we want to work towards. And so, whether it's, you know, changing the word promotion of the building code and rental code. It's really trying to encompass that Building and Neighborhood Services is a department that works with building codes and contributes to the quality of life, so.
Why don't you change the one that, that might make it easier? Continue promotion and refinement of the building and rental code. Cause we're talking about some things that need to be clarified, need to be tweaked or.
Okay, that makes, that's fine.
You know, in, in the work plan, in the other page, I think you'll see that the specifics are there.
And the other page is really where the actions that you're thinking of, like I said, when you're thinking of a timeframe from July one, twenty sixteen to June thirtieth of twenty eighteen. What actions do you want to do? I mean, what is it that you want me to be doing and what is it that I need to be directing the departments to be doing? And so, it's really then, this, this page is the one where that comes, that's really where things need to be added here. And so, we'll, we'll just kinda go through this here. Council considers a plan for the utilization of.
Wait, we're done with this?
No, it's the same, it's the same, so the pieces are the same.
Oh, okay, okay.
One, one goes into more detail, one's kinda like the, I wanna say the.
Definition.
A definition or overview. This is the specifics of the plan.
All right, all right.
This is, to me, the more important page.
Yes, this, and I would agree with you because this, this really is the actions. What actions are you wanting to take? And so, plan for utilization of the TIF LMI dollars. Council considers the development of a master plan for Downtown Clinton, which was something we talked about last time. That's the specific, one specific action you're looking to do in terms of relations with downtown. This, and then, continue to engage realtors, banks, insurance agents and other stakeholders in the.